...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I'm going to take logistics here. I'm thinking if we have a professional photographer, then maybe the board will come back and back all of these guys. We'll get a group photo. Okay, I think we're there. All right, are we ready? Okay, everybody look right here. One, two, three. Do you want to sing the chant?
Okay, guys, ready to sing our chant?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. Little lottos are so cool, little lottos are so cool. We follow school rules.
We follow school rules.
Be respectful.
Be respectful.
Be responsible.
Be responsible.
Be safe.
Be safe.
We will.
We will.
Too great.
Too great.
Thank you very much. I know we are slated here to have a building presentation later. And then...
All right, Kristen, my question is...
If you guys can come through here, let's shake your hands. Okay, that was really good. Laura, are you still there? It doesn't say it's on food. I'm just checking. I thought we would just try to do that before we make any motion. Hey Laura, this is Mark. We just took care of the opening of the meeting and I think we lost you. And so I got you reconnected and we'll continue with some motions. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for being here. Okay, with all of that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
President, I approve the agenda with the following amendments. 第一条 revised item number C-2 to add recognition of Garden City High School band and choir students. Two, additional certified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E-3. Three, revised amount of item number E-5-B, purchase and installation of a natural gas generator at Victor Amelis Elementary School with an estimated cost of $22,330. Number four, add item number E-5-C, out-of-state travel for GCHS forensic team for national individual events tournament of champions in Omaha, Nebraska on May 10th through 12th, 2019. And number five, add item number E-5-D, special education assurances for the individuals with disabilities education act, IDA grant.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Do I have a second? Okay, Gene Sexton, you have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on that approval? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, raise your left hand or say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, I think we're ready for item C on the agenda. That's our public comment. I do have one public comment signed up here. And thank you for moving that back. Will Basham?
That's me.
Will, welcome to the board.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'll be brief. I was told in five minutes I was going to be tugged out of here. So, my name is Will Basham. My wife and I have two and will have three kids in Plymel Elementary School next year. I reached out to a lot of you guys via email last week and really appreciative of the responses. The reason I wanted to come today was really simple. Conversation about full-time principal position at Plymel was being discussed forward. And it was just timely with some things going on in our world, my family's world. So I thought I'd just come and make some comments on that, really simple. One, you know, when I think on that, out of a class of 20 kids, second graders, four of them instantly come into my mind as kids that would be benefited if that, if we funded a full-time principal position. And there's way more than four, and I know there's way more than four kids in our district. But my point is, those kids came to my mind really, really quickly because they're having a tough time. There's disciplinary issues in their class and absolutely that's down the fair way of a principal. Nothing against our current principal, period, but her time is limited and absolutely if she was there more, she could address these issues more easily, correct? The second reason is, is these same kids and more, you know, we expect them to come to an environment and learn. But right now, they don't feel safe in that environment. They're not comfortable in that environment. They're apprehensive about going to school. And these are kids that like learning. These are kids that like school. These aren't kids that dread the whole process. They're just completely stressed out by the fact that they have to go to school and potentially be bullied. Whereas, I believe, if we had more funding for a full-time principal, that maybe it would hopefully be alleviating. Each day it goes on, right? I just go back to the kids. Some kid has to come to school really, really nervous about being picked on that day. They have to go home potentially sad. They have to go home with their feelings hurt. Or they have to go home embarrassed because they were bullied. Because potentially there's not somebody standing right there nearby and they can easily help address the situation. Whereas a full-time principal versus a part-time principal may be able to do that. And lastly, it may be too late in the process to achieve funding for this role. But I just wanted to open the dialogue with you guys, open the conversation, create some awareness. I'm not necessarily aware of how the communication channel works between student, teacher, principal, board. I truly have no idea. But wanted to open the conversation. There's certainly parents that, other parents that could have brought or suggested and, you know, potentially if you need ideas of people to contact, I could help there. But I just kind of want to do, that's why I'm here today. And that's really all I have. So thank you. Questions?
Well, I think what we'll do is just simply accept your comment.
Okay.
I want to first of all applaud you for coming before the board. It's not an easy process and it's a little intimidating. We certainly don't want it to be that way.
Sure.
And I want to emphasize because of you coming here that it's something that we want to encourage.
Sure.
Your messages to the board, this is the way to do it.
Cool.
And so thank you for doing that.
Sure.
And I appreciate your comments. They're right on spot. Does raise another issue, maybe we'll talk about some of the bullying. But in regards to that item of a principal, thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you all.
Well, with that, do we have any other comments or letters? I think we're down on that same item C. We're down to recognition. Recognition. So now we have C1, recognition of Ronald McDonald pull tab challenge. And who do we have to make that presentation? Okay, we've got a full plate and so thank you for being here. It's exciting every year to hear about it. But we are also short on time, so I want to encourage you to be efficient, I guess.
We'll do. We'll do.
Okay.
I'm Janet Reed. My husband Roger and I have done this for a few years. No, Steve, I didn't have Roger bring. 648 and a half pounds of tabs that were collected this year. 161 pounds were collected by the Cimarron Elementary School. This is a half pound. So imagine how our living room right now looks with 648 and a half pounds. It's a great thing. I see shirts that say "family." That's what Ronald McDonald House is about. It doesn't matter if it's Wichita, Denver, Kansas City. And trust me, it is easy to save tabs. It is so easy. Please consider doing this. For those of you within the school district, Dr. Carlin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they need to show community involvement, parental involvement. What an easy way to show community involvement and parental involvement on your state report by saving tabs. I had a friend of mine give this to me today when I took something by to her. She said, "Oh, I have a few tabs. It's not very much." And I said to a family that stays at Ronald McDonald House, "This is the world." So I highly encourage all of the schools in our district, not just the ones who are my annual winners or almost to the top winners, but every school in the district, please save the tabs. Encourage your students, encourage yourselves to save these tabs. I would like the representatives from the schools who are here tonight to please stand and be recognized because they're my contact with the schools and many of them are my contacts year after year after year and they help me out tremendously. All I do is email and they tell me, "Yes, stop by," or "No, we're not ready yet." So I thank them very much so. This year, I had one school beginning of the year who said, "We're going to win it." And that was from their principal to even the students. I'd go in the building and they'd go, "You're the pop tab lady. What do you do with those? You're the pop tab lady." And I'm very pleased to announce we have a school that this is the second time that they have won with 138 and a half pounds, Alta Brown Elementary School. And I understand, Katrina, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie Hines had quite a bit to do with that. So Angie, if you'll come up also, that would be great. We'd love to have you here.
So this is the traveling trophy?
This is the traveling trophy that you purchased as a school board. And I also want to say Sonia from Colleen's Trophies donated the engraving this year. She said, "That's a little bitty thing that I can do, but I'm really proud of the school." So it was a very nice gesture. So certificate and congratulations. Thank you. Good job.
Well, bragging rights now for another year. Thank you so much for that and for everybody involved in that. And I totally agree. That is such a simple way to show engagement, community engagement, and it's certainly a worthy cause of the Ronald McDonald House. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item C2, recognition of Garden City High School orchestra, band, and choir students for earning awards at state competition. Mr. Singh?
Good evening, school board. It's my honor to be before the board again to feature my great directors and their great students and what they've accomplished and succeeded in. So I would like to introduce Ms. Olivia Henning, Ms. Summer Miller, and Mr. Lyle Soban. And I'm going to let them take the floor.
And I apologize, it's Dr. Singh.
Thank you, sir.
Not in that habit.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, please. I brought a herd of choir kids with me today, so. We had a really successful year in choir this year. And I brought some of our students that have made it to a couple of state recognitions. We started the year with auditions for district choir on November 3rd. If you auditioned for district choir, will you guys wave? We had 25 of our students make it into district choir. We were one of the schools with the most people in district choir, which was really fun for us. And then district choir actually happened on December 1st. Students that attend district choir are also eligible to make it to state choir, which is in February at the annual KMEA, Kansas Music Educators Association convention. And they have to be sophomores through seniors to make that group. And we had eight of those make it and one alternate. So if you made it to state, will you wave? So those people attended district and then made it to state. And so out of all of Kansas, they were picked to go. So they scored the top in their sections, whether it was soprano I or bass I or whatever that was. And we also have two of our three-year participants in district choir with us today. Kenzie Britton and Peter Hall. They have participated in district choir for three years. Second semester gets pretty busy. We have regionals on April 6th. We took four ensembles and 18 soloists. All four of our ensembles got a one, which is the highest rating that you can get. We had Buffalo Men, which is three points away from a perfect score. Freshman Girls, La Chanté Ensemble, and then our Acappella Ensemble. And Acappella Ensemble is with us today. Will you guys wave? They got a one at regional. So when you get a one at regionals, you qualify to go to state. And five of our 18 soloists qualified to go to state. And we have a couple of them with us, soloists that went to state. Will you wave? There they are. On April 10th, we had State Large Group. So we combined, you can take three choirs, but we combined a couple of our choirs to take two this year. We had Combined Women, which was all of the freshman girls, and we added a few from La Chanté to kind of beef up our sections. They received a one rating. And we combined Acappella Choir and Show Choir and they received a one rating. So very successful for us at State Large Group. And then state solo and ensemble was April 27th. The Acappella Ensemble and three of our soloists went. And our Acappella Ensemble received a one rating. Will you wave? So again, the highest rating that you can get. So we've had a very successful year this year. Thank you for all of your support. We really appreciate it.
She says she liked my shirt.
Okay, next up, we're going to be establishing a phone call there while you're talking. Okay, go ahead.
Phone call with whom?
Another, a board member, Laura Boers.
Oh, okay. That's just Laura. That's cool. In case you don't know me, I am Summer Miller. I do orchestra at the high school and at Horace Good. And to kind of sum up, we do everything the choir does. We have district orchestra. We have state orchestra. We have all that stuff too. It is very, it's extremely difficult for our students to make it into state orchestra because we do not have the, we don't, there's a different formula. But, so we took 34 entries to regional solo and ensemble contest. And our judge had very, very high standards this year. We got four ones and I took three of those to state. One of the boys had a conflict with the Robin Hood production and so he decided not to go to state. And that's totally fine. But of the three kids that we took to state, we took Dulce Perez and McKenna Matheny and also Jason Resendez, who is not able to be here today. They all three went to state and they all three got ones, which is the highest rating, which I wasn't expecting it. But it was, it was really cool because we took three entries and we all got ones. So, but overall, it's been a really successful year. And like Olivia said, thank you guys for all your support and what you do for our kids.
Board, I realize I didn't give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And so just since we're doing this on wage, do you have any questions for the streams?
Would you ask your master's degree, bud?
Dulce is a violinist and she is a senior. And McKenna is a bass player and she's a freshman. He's also a bass player and he is a sophomore. And the fourth, the fourth young man is Kyler Bennett. He was actually with the choir, but he got a one on his cello solo. So low strings. I thought that was really interesting. So.
And other questions? I have a quick one.
Yes.
Do you by chance know offhand how many students are involved in the orchestra program?
Here?
Here being in the high school?
Well, in the district.
In the district, yes.
We have about 120 at the high school, give or take. I have 65 at Horace Good. I think Haley has maybe 35 over at Kenneth Henderson. Does that sound about right? Okay, and then she's got, I don't know, 150 to 200 at the fifth and sixth grade level. Which she does by herself, by the way. All alone. Loneliness.
Well, I knew it was a lot of involvement. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And congratulations to the students in there. So come on through if you want to shake your... Okay, Mr. Soban?
Good evening and thanks for letting us come in and take a little bit of your time this evening to talk about our kids. We've had a fun year in the band world, starting all the way back in July with Band Camp and moving all the way through to now. In the fall, we competed at three different competitions, earned superior ratings at two of the three. And the third one is a full-blown competition, state competition, and we finished around, I think we were 21st in the state this year. As far as for district honor band and honor jazz band, we had five students make district honor jazz this year and had, I believe, 12 make the district honor band this year. In the spring, the big thing we focus on is contests, concerts and contests. And for contests this year, our top ensemble, Wind Ensemble, earned a one rating at large group contest in Dodge City. Our second group earned a two rating. Honestly, their two rating was with three really rough judges. It was, in my time in the state of Kansas, I think I've seen one four handed out by a judge. Our round of judges handed out multiple fours across two different days. And so we had some really rough judges that day too. So I'm really proud of the kids for that. We took 23 events to Dodge City for regional solo and small ensemble contest. Of the 23 events that we took, we had seven students earn one ratings and qualified them to perform at state. One of them chose to not go perform because she had her wisdom teeth out the day before state contest. And I said, "Yeah, let's not put that through the flute." But of our six that went, we had five students earn a two rating and one student earn a one. Two of them couldn't make it with us tonight. Daniel Castro took a rudimental snare solo. He's a junior at the high school and earned a two rating on that. Melissa Fiero is a freshman flute player and she took a flute player, or took a flute solo to contest, earned a two on that. With us tonight, we have Orion Craig, trombone. He's a sophomore. Earned a two on his trombone solo. Look excited.
I am excited.
This is as exciting as it gets. Juan Moya is a freshman trombone. Earned a two rating on his solo. Alonzo Reyes is a sophomore bassoon and earned a two rating on his solo. Really proud of those three. And then our one student who earned a one rating this year in Topeka is Faith White and she's a senior, earned a one rating on her euphonium solo. So I'm proud of all of our kids. They've worked really hard all year. The best part is that we're in the middle of our leadership interviews for next year. In fact, our last night is tomorrow night for leadership interviews. And then we have a concert, our final concert of the year is May 13th at 7:30 at the high school. Love to see you all come to our concert and see our kids actually perform. And just look at the joy on their faces in the act of doing. And that's always a fun concert to be at because it's our last one for our seniors to send them down the road and say thank you for your time. And remember, you can always come home and visit, but you can't stay there anymore. But 7:30 at the high school. We'd love to have you come. Both bands will play. And it'll be, or all three bands will play that evening and it'll be a really fun evening. So. Do you have any questions for me?
Board, any questions?
I don't think I've ever heard of an instrument called an euphonium.
Euphonium.
Euphonium, what is that?
It's, it's a, so every instrument's built on length of tubing. And so a tuba is about 35 feet of tubing. Euphonium is half of that. It's about 15 and a half.
What does it look like?
It's, it's a baby.
It looks like a mini tuba, basically.
Baby.
Yeah.
Other questions?
What time is the concert starting?
7:30. 7:30 in the high school auditorium.
Well, thank you very much and congratulations to...
There's Melissa. Melissa Fiero is our freshman flute player for contest. She made it.
Okay, I think we're ready for C3, which is building presentation, Garfield Early Childhood Center.
All right, everybody come on up.
So Principal Baker?
Yes.
At the podium.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to let everyone kind of wave and introduce themselves and let you know what they are teaching at Garfield. So I am Andrea Baker and the principal at Garfield Early Childhood Center.
I'm Melanie Garrison and I am the RISE classroom at Garfield, which is preaching independence through structured departments.
I'm Sarah Geer. I'm the instructional coach and the ASL interventionist.
I'm Annette White. I provide the special ed in the regular ed classrooms.
I'm Heidi Candace. I'm one of the elf teachers.
Fabiola Gutierrez, one of the spec classroom teachers.
I'm Karen Kyler, spec classroom teacher.
Jordan Nicola, an elf teacher.
Megan Blake, a three-year-old migrant program.
I'm Jessica Fowler. I'm an early childhood special education teacher.
Rosa Rodriguez, bilingual teacher.
I'm Elizabeth Martin, a special ed teacher.
Juliana Baez, a four-year-old Spanish classroom and a four-year-old elf.
I'm Felita Villarreal, one of the KKK classroom.
Sue Trambles, elf classroom.
Anthony Echols, spec teacher.
Amber Chalata, spec teacher.
I'm Amber Becker, an adult.
I'm Amber Becker, I teach elf.